Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the regular city council. The time is now seven twenty-five P. M. And the day is March the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Before we call this meeting to order, we will have a prayer by Reverend Williams, please.
Let us pray. By God, we come no other way, leaning on your everlasting love. Realize that this is the city of love, Father, and we give you all the praises and the glory. And as we prepare to take care of the business of this city, we ask that you keep your everlasting arms around this city and make, continue to make this city the city of love. In the name of Jesus, I pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen. And as it relates to the pledge of allegiance, the student from AIA, if you could please post a motion. Lead us in our pledge of allegiance for this. All right. You guys start when you're ready. When you're ready.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, City Clerk.
Reverend Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protim Howard.
Here.
Can you hear me? While you're here.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Watley.
President.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
We have a full house of four.
All right, I wonder if we're moving right into the agenda. We will have a presentation by American International Academy, known as AIA, and the home of the mighty Vikings. Dr. White.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Well, I keep hearing that everyone's saying that there is, there are no schools in Inkster. Well, I'm here to give a quick presentation. We do have schools in Inkster. We have a K-12 program with a dual enrollment program, a gifted and talented program, a science program partnered with Equitech, and three campuses. I'm about to show you two of our campuses and some of the offerings that we have here. This is our print shop at our Rosewood campus. We have the ability to make banners, posters, T-shirts. Our students design them on the computers themselves. We have a dance room with a dance instructor. Our students learn jazz, hip-hop, and ballet. We have videography, digital media. Our students learn how to work with all types of modern equipment for audio and visual. We have the AIA band with our drum line. Our program. And coming soon, we just put in all of the equipment to do a cosmetology program. That should be starting in the fall of two thousand and twenty-two. This is our cafeterium where our students are able to do presentations. This was our Black History Program with the Glee Club and the drum line. We also have a game room where our students are able to go in. We have old-school games. We have the latest games with PlayStation Four at spots, and we have, there you go.
AIA Westland Campus for the preschool through second-grade students. Here we focus on student achievement, and a couple of things that we like to do is our smart board intervention. Our smart board intervention is an academic strategy that differs from activities during the classroom. It is designed to provide our students with necessary skills and academic support to allow them to achieve very level expectations. Something else that we strive to do is get our students better at writing. And how do we do that? By having them write every single day. Here, the students are writing in their goal mindset journal, getting them to understand that they can accomplish anything if they don't give up, that they can learn from their mistakes, and that all things are difficult before everything's easy. Thank you.
Young, we go take lab. I'm working with students at American International Academy in Inkster, Michigan. Some of the projects that we're doing in the lab now, one of the projects that involve chlorophyll extraction, like chlorophyll is really needed for photosynthesis. That's what makes the plant green. Students are learning how to extract the chlorophyll and really spend time understanding how chlorophyll can be sold sales also in the photosynthesis process and what keeps plants pretty much alive, right? Because plants have to have sugar, and this is part of that process that you need. So see how the students are able to extract the chlorophyll from the plant, in this case, the leaf. And in this case, we want to purify it. So one of our processes to extract is using isopropyl alcohol ninety-one percent. And so we know that alcohol has a lower boiling point, and more, so we can pour all the alcohol that you'll have left behind is actual chlorophyll.
That's our presentation. Just recapping real quick, the young lady that you saw was our elementary principal, Ms. Watkins. You also saw Mr. Young from the Equitech lab. We have virtual reality, augmented reality in every single classroom. We have a smart board. Every student has two computers, one at home and one at the school. We are the most advanced school in the area as far as technology is concerned. Anyone that wants to come out and check us out, you are free to come, and we will give you a tour. Thank you.
What's your campuses, the campuses?
So we have a campus on Henry Ruff and Cherry Hill, the old academy of Westland. You have a campus on Inkster Road and Avondale, and then we have a campus on Rosewood, right behind the recreational complex.
And then you say Avondale, did you say Avondale, Inkster? And out of the three thousand school-aged kids that's in Inkster, how many go to AIA?
We have approximately six hundred fifty students that go to AIA currently.
Awesome. You guys provide transportation as well?
We do. We have currently eight school buses. So if you see a school bus, usually the cheese bus is our bus. It says AIA on the side, Inkster Community.
You. Any questions from this body, comments?
Yes, I was. Thank you. In the past, I actually toured the Avondale location, and then as they were revitalizing, if you will, the Rosewood location, I got to see that in progress, and that was pre-COVID. So I'm sure right now you're far more advanced, but the technology you had then just wowed me. I mean, being that we all haven't been in school unless you have kids or grandkids, we don't technically just pop into schools and see what's going on. So I was really impressed by the technical portion or technical piece that was there for the kids to jump right in on, because at two and three, they know how to operate an iPhone better than me. But when it's time to go to school and the same type of technology is not there, you lose them.
Correct. And we have advanced, since you've been there last, we've renovated the gym. We're in the process of that at our Avondale campus. And this summer, we have a warehouse attached to our Avondale campus, about seventy thousand square feet, that we are starting our vocational program in that space. So we're going to do a complete build-out. It's about a three-million-dollar project that we're involved in, where we'll have culinary arts. We will have electrical, plumbing, we'll have robotics. That space will be doing a lot of different things. Any other questions?
Oh, from Wilder.
Were you through?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. No, I just wanted to thank you for all your assistance in opening up the school to all the community activities you did in the past couple of years. I know COVID has stopped us from doing that, but I just wanted to thank you for always being available for us to use your facility for different things of that nature. And you should know that whatever he's planning in that warehouse, he's probably running it, because he's the carpenter, the electrician, the plumber, and all those other things that he just mentioned. So I want to thank you.
Well, it's a partnership, and we appreciate being a part of Inkster, because Mr. Wilder, myself, a lot of our employees are from Inkster. And now our graduating class of, what, two thousand nineteen? Two thousand twenty, we have now employed five of our students, and they are the next generation of the employees, and they'll, they'll be taking our job soon. So it's not just about educating our students. It's about giving them opportunities, giving them exposure, and making way for the next generation that can come in and be leaders in our schools.
And those plumbers and things, are they coming at a reduced rate? Because I have a, never mind.
Just while you were going a little bit there, that I wanted you to expand on a little bit as it relates to being the native son of Inkster. But the ownership of the school, you know, when you talk about charter schools, you know, most people think that they're governed by, you know, these corporate entities. Can you talk a little bit about that?
So we're a little bit different. We are self-managed. I'm the CEO and superintendent, but I get a set salary. So there's no extra money. All of our extra money goes into the schools. Also, the way we have positioned our schools, the schools are owned by the students and the board. So no matter what entity comes in, the school will always be owned by the students and the board. They cannot sell it. It will be there for the community, regardless of whether I'm there or whether I'm not there. Our schools are also paid for. There are only three percent of charter schools in the state of Michigan that own their schools. Our schools are completely bought and paid for. We have zero debt as far as our schools are concerned. So all that money is able to go back into the schools to provide better benefits, salaries, and resources for the students. So we have a very different model that we've been able to do and work with. We are looking and we have been finding people that are invested in our students, our students, from Inkster. We don't want just anyone. We're not trying to have three thousand students, five thousand students. We want students that come from Inkster, and we want to invest in them and make sure that they have opportunities. That's why we open up our buildings for free as long as it is benefiting our students. We partner with a lot of different entities, let them come into the schools. If it's going to benefit the city of Inkster, if it's going to benefit our families, if it's going to benefit our students, we are making ourselves available as a resource.
Yeah, that is awesome, Ben. All right, any other questions, comments? Thank you so much, Dr. White. All right, and I know Dr. White had told me that, you know, the kids got school in the morning, so hurry this along. So I jumped too fast and we didn't approve the agenda, so I apologize. As it relates to a point where I know that we have one item that we removed from the agenda as it relates to the speed bumps. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda with several corrections.
Please.
Okay.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, the first one would be, there was a motion by Protim Howard. Oh, is that for the consent agenda? No? Oh.
Just approving the agenda.
All right, this as it relates to the agenda, the approval of the agenda.
Well, I have, this isn't all the agenda.
I don't know.
I'm confused.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
Okay, all right. We're just removing the item of the speed bumps. Come back with an RFP attached to it, RQ attached to it. Anything else? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? I just have a motion carries. All right, moving right on into it, consent agenda. We're there now.
Okay, I have some corrections for the consent agenda. How do you want me to go about that?
Just need, just need a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with corrections.
All right, is there support?
Support.
All right, what's those corrections, ma'am?
Okay, the first one is the motion by Protim Howard and seconded by myself to reappoint June Patterson. That's on item top. And then it, to the Aging Commission. Then it has a six oh vote, and then it has me dissenting. Now, I couldn't approve it, we dissented, but we still have a six oh vote, because the mayor doesn't vote, because he's a tie. So we need to correct that.
All right. Anything else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
There are some closed session issues on here, and I'm not sure if they should be on there. And it's not what we actually consented in the closed session.
Oh, good.
So I don't know if I'm supposed to read that publicly or just note that that wasn't what we agreed to in closed session.
Mr. Chair.
Please, go ahead.
I'll review those minutes and make the appropriate corrections. That was discussed in closed session.
Okay. And the third item I have is that in public comments, she mentioned the two young ladies that had an issue with me last week, but she did not indicate my response.
And when you say she, are we talking about our city clerk?
Yes. Isn't that who does this?
Okay, yes, ma'am, of course. I just want to make sure that we're clear for the general public.
Okay.
All right.
Those are my three corrections.
All right, we'll make sure those are noted, City Clerk.
Yes.
And we'll get those taken care of. Any others? Here, none in all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? I just have a motion carries. All right, moving right into new business. City Clerk, please. I'm sorry, you know what? I'm moving too fast. Boards and commissions. We do have boards and commissions this time around, or no? No boards and commissions? Okay, no review. Okay, they're just on here. Okay, I got you. All right, go ahead, new business. You know what? I know we had talked about it.
Yeah.
It's our pleasure. Go ahead, you want to do it?
I would like to motion that we bring in the Commissioner Strowman onto the Housing Commission.
All right, then, so let me just say this, this is for a protocol, and so it's proper. As the mayor, I'm recommending to this body that we reappoint Mabel Strowman to the Housing Commission. You're going to make a motion to that, correct? All right, is there support?
So far.
We moved and properly supported, any discussion? Here, none in all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, good, motion carries. Just like to thank Mabel Strowman for her continued service on that board. She's doing an excellent job, and I'm glad that she wants to continue on. So let's keep it moving. I know she says she couldn't be here tonight, but just wanted to say that publicly, and we thank you for your service and your continued service to citizens of Inkster. All right. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
So nine A in new business. There's an item here to consider adoption of the attached resolution demanding impacted Great Lakes Water Authority member communities not be responsible for the city of Highland Park's Great Lakes Water Authority debt.
Push, please.
Some move.
There's support? We moved and properly supported, just for the record, as it relates to this. So general public have an understanding. We're a member of several other communities, eighteen other communities in this region, where we pay into what is called GLIVA, which is the Great Lake Water Authority. Basically, what has happened over the last ten years, this has been a dispute as it relates to what Highland Park paid or didn't pay. However, it is a judgment on the books that says that Highland Park does not owe money to GLIVA in the amount of fifty-six million dollars, but it's actually been resolved, and that GLIVA owes them a million dollars. But they took it back to federal court, and they're in federal court right now. GLIVA is suing Highland Park for the fifty-six million dollars. But in the meantime, between time, they've been charging us for the debt. And when I say us, it's us and the other eighteen communities that's in this region. So what we're asking for is a resolution to support the resolution that we've already done from the other mayors in this community, I mean, our community, but in this region, for, to us to send a letter as a body, as a community, saying that we will not pay any more monies towards this debt that clearly is not owed at this particular time. And then we are seeking, as the eighteen communities, we are seeking legal counsel, working with MML, MML, L, MML, MML, L?
MML.
MML, MML, yes, you guys know what I'm talking about. At any rate, to basically sue, countersue GLIVA for the monies that they've been taking from us currently. Like, they've been taking money from us. That's why your water bills have been hiked as it relates to sewage and water rates, because the water that we're getting, it used to be the Detroit Water Authority. Detroit Water Authority had an agreement with Highland Park, and then when GLIVA took over, they said, okay, you owe us this amount of money. And Highland Park said, we didn't. The judge said they didn't, but GLIVA continued to bill us, the consumers, for. And each year, they have to come back to us with these rates. And John Racy from over in Wayne, Amir Wayne, actually, and a group of individuals caught it and brought it to our attention. And that's why I'm here now, asking for a resolution to support the other mayors, and I have done already. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am, Mayor, please.
Even when they became a water, when they became a water authority, we have no control over the rates, right?
No, unfortunately not.
So they can charge us, bill, charge us anything, right? We just have to make sure we being charged for what we've been actually used.
Yes, ma'am, at this point, so basically what happened when the city of Detroit went into bankruptcy, GLIVA was formed by two judges and our county executive at the time. And they basically said, okay, you have the authority over whoever is getting water from you, and then you charge the rates and split it throughout all the communities that have to get water from you. So when we get those water hikes, when you guys, we're putting water rates out to the community, it's not that this body is making up those numbers, it's the numbers is actually coming from the Great Lakes Water Authority. Am I correct, Mr. Bivens? Okay.
So do you know how much they have billed us?
We're getting into those numbers right now, but it looks like that we're upwards into about six million that we paid over the last two years. It's us.
They going back ten years?
They've been, so basically, and this is the, this is the conundrum, because GLIVA, when they took over the Detroit Water Authority, right? They basically said, okay, who owes us money? So at the Inkster, at one point in time, owed money, and so on and so on. So with this agreement that we signed with the Great Lakes Water Authority, we are a conglomerate. So we basically just say, okay, I'm going to share in your woes. So as long as all the water's doing good, everybody's paying their portion, great. But if a city decides not to pay them, then it goes over to the other members. But it's not really an authority, and that's the crazy part of it. It's not, it's, like you said, it's a monopoly on the water. We have no other place to get the water from, so we just, we going to them right now. So until we figure out another way, I mean, or, you know, however, you know, we do this type of stuff like this, fighting back against them is just going to continue to be rent, house, rent. But we've been paying them because they came in and took over the Detroit Water Authority, and whatever debt was on the table, they said, okay, all the members, you guys can just pay for the debt. Even though we don't have a judgment, we know that the debt is real money that exists in their minds. So even though Highland Park said that, hey, we don't owe you that much money, and a judge said that they don't owe them that much money, they came back and just put it on us anyway. And we're asking it to stop, and then from there, we're going to, you know, we're going to go after our money with the other communities that's in the Detroit, I mean, the Great Lakes Water Authority. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
There was, I believe, Canton and a few other down east communities went with another water authority several years ago. Do we have any information on that? Or is there a possibility of us getting involved? I think it was like four different communities that didn't go with GLIVA. So have we looked into that?
Are you, are you prepared to answer that question? I know that from that, they're there, so those communities are still at the table with us because they have to pay for sewage.
Okay.
So they have their own, like, a water base or whatever it is, but they're still at Canton and all those other communities, like you're talking about, they're still at the table with us, because they have to pay for sewer.
So they're in, in this suit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. When will Mr. Bivens be able to talk about that?
I know that, and let me say this, because this is a hot topic. We are, we're going to have GLIVA come out and explain themselves to us as a community. So we'll have a community, we'll put together, you know, a community town hall, and then have them come out and explain themselves to us as a community. So let's see if we can start working towards that, probably within the next thirty days or so, and get to the community so we can have it over a direct complex and let people come in and ask their questions. But we'll make sure we get as much information as we can to you all before then, okay? Councilwoman, anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? I just have a motion carries, item B, please.
Item B has been.
Oh, I'm sorry, item B is removed. Thank you, item C, please.
Item C is to consider adopting a resolution that would decertify and/or vacate a portion of Bayham Street south of Central Bridge in accordance with Act Fifty-One.
Push, please.
Some move.
There's support? We moved and properly supported, any discussion? Here, none in all in favor?
Before you go. Could, could we just have Mr. Bivens just briefly go over what's happening here?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You're in the body here. So MDAC, Michigan Department of Transportation, which is the Act Fifty-One money that we get from the gas tax and maintain our roads. They came out and did an audit in the city of Inkster, and they determined that two roads that we claim that are mobile, that means automobiles can go up and down these roads with no problem, are no longer accessible for automobile traffic. So in that case, they sent me an email asking me to prove that these roads still exist. I wasn't able to do that. So in the process, in their process, I had to decertify a certain portion of that road because we get revenue for that, and it's no longer a revenue attraction. So that's what you have before Mayor and Council now. I think in the council request, it says Trobridge is two hundred and fifty-four feet that I'm decertified. That mean that we actually, you can't actually drive in that portion of Bayham. It's, it no longer exists. And then the same thing on Michigan Avenue, where Miss. And then the same thing on Michigan Avenue, where Mr. Boji built his youth center, that he took out the road, he put a building there, he put a parking lot there, so that road doesn't exist anymore. So, therefore, the city of Incester can't claim revenue in there. And by me being the street administrator appointed by council, every year, I have to certify a map for the city of Incester to certify all these roads exist. So, when they sent me that letter, I had to respond, and my response is I had to bring it before council to get them to adopt the resolution, and I had to sign off on the road map, send this resolution back to the master to let him know these two portions of road have been decertified by the city of Incester. I'm not closing any of those. I'm not barricading them, but none of that. It's just a portion of these roads no longer exists.
Good enough. All right. Thank you, sir. You appreciate it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carries. Same thing, next one, please, ma'am.
Item D would be considering a resolution to decertify and/or vacate a court north of US Twelve, and that's also in accordance with Act Fifty-One.
Some move.
There's support?
Support.
The mood and properly supported, discussion? Those are the same thing as the last one, correct? Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carries. Next one, please.
Item E would consider authorizing the Department of Public Services Director to purchase five fire hydrants from EJ, which is a provider, in the amount of one hundred thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and ten cents. One hundred thousand dollars of this will be reimbursed to the city from the financially distressed cities, villages, and townships grant agreement between the Michigan Department of Treasury and the city of Incester.
Wish you pleasure?
Some move.
Remove.
The mood and properly supported, any discussion?
I got one, one question. Please, sir, councilwoman. Once we get these, are we replacing all five hydrants or? Are we replacing all five hydrants in the city of Incester?
We were replacing thirty-seven of them right now.
Say what?
We will, we will be replacing thirty-seven of them right now with this money that we get away by these hydrants for. But eventually, we will get around. We have nine hundred and fifty hydrants in the city of Incester.
Okay, by five hydrants, how many are?
Just nine hundred and fifty.
Okay.
In the city of Incester.
And we replacing, replacing how many now with this?
Thirty-seven.
Seventy-seven?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven?
Yes. It's a star, yeah. I went out for a grant, and we got a hundred thousand. I asked for five hundred, they gave me a hundred.
Councilwoman Williams, are you done?
Yeah.
All right, council?
How you gonna make the determination, I guess, on, of course, you're replacing outdated, badly needed hydrants, but which, how many are actually badly needed?
Lot more than thirty-seven.
A hundred thousand, you know, you got a hundred thousand, thirty-seven, but how many do we have that's outdated and badly needed?
Lot more than thirty-seven, man.
Okay.
Lot more, way more than thirty-seven. Like I said, this is a star, and these will be, are the worst. These are ones that's inoperable. We have some hydrants here that are from the nineteen twenties and nineteen thirties. Those will be replaced, and thirty-seven.
Right, but Mr. Bivens, you're always being modest, and I appreciate, I appreciate it in some instance. However, in this one, though, as it relates to how you got to that, you have the data, you did a study.
We did a study. Our engineers went out and inspected every hydrant in the city of Incester, all nine hundred and fifty. And based on this, we have a study of what hydrants need to be replaced right away, and as we continue to give money, we will continue to replace hydrants. So, as the mayor stated, I'm always modest. Everything I come before you guys, there's been a study. You know, I just, when I approached the mayor with these ideas, there's been five, six year study done, and this is what, even when it comes to water mains, sewer and all that, these are studies that have been done. You know, like, even with the roads, we do a pays study every three years to identify our roads, and they get number. Then I sit down with the mayor at this time of the year, budget time, I tell him, hey, this is what we're doing for that upcoming budget, so. Yes, I am a modest person, but he likes to bring it out.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that.
No doubt. We appreciate the work. Any, well, any none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carries. Item F, please.
Item F is to consider approval of case number twenty-one dash twenty-one. It's a request to rezone to eight four four zero Reynolds Road from B Three General Business District to M One Light Industrial.
Wish you pleasure? Wish you pleasure? Some move, Mr. Chair. There's support? Or would it probably support it before we get off to discussion? Jamie, if you could, please come forward and explain to the general public what's happening here.
Sure. Good evening, council members. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Jamie Gormfloh, I'm with McKenna Associates. I am acting as the interim planning director for the city of Incester. This particular request has come from an applicant who's wishing to rezone a piece of property that was originally zoned M One back somewhere around two thousand eight or before. Uh, and during the time that the subsequent master plans were updated and rezonings took place, it was downzoned from M One to B Three. The existing facility on the site has been vacant for quite a few years. The applicant has come forward to ask that it be zoned back to its original zoning of M One, so that they can put a proper industrial manufacturing type use in that facility. As a building that's currently abandoned and not being used, the type of uses that are allowed within the B Three District are not really appropriate for the building and the type of building that exists on the site. So, this is a way to rezone the property to something that it was before, move a new business into the community, and have it be a manufacturing operation that would be consistent with the M One zoning district. I believe it was close to a unanimous vote through the planning commission who voted to recommend that the rezoning move forward. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Questions from the council? Okay, listen, Chair recognized, Councilwoman Washington?
This was just, I guess this is just a question to, what was the change from, um, from M One to B Three? Because I guess that, you know, when you think about railroad tracks and you have hotels and automotive salvage yards and maintenance facilities, power transmission line, repair company, I'm not sure if anyone can actually answer this part of the past council. What was the reason of changing it to B Three? Why would that be a business district? Like, what was the reason for Light Industrial to be three?
I believe I can provide some explanation for why, why that might have occurred, but since I wasn't here and quite a few other people weren't here as well, I'm not sure the exact history of how that came to be. But when the master plan was updated, it created parcels or suggested a zoning district of B Three for everything that was north of the railroad tracks but south of Michigan Avenue. And the intent was that all of these properties were properties that would face onto Michigan Avenue and be the business fronts, the business faces of, of the community as you're going down Michigan Avenue. However, there are several properties that were north of the railroad tracks but did not have frontage on Michigan Avenue, and those are located primarily between Harrison and Spring Hill. And it's like where you're talking about, where the salvage yard is and the industrial property where the rezoning is being requested, and some of those other ones that don't front on Michigan Avenue. And the intent of the ordinance would suggest that those properties should have remained M One, but in sort of a broad stroke, to be consistent with the master plan that was adopted, uh, sort of a broad rezoning was done at that time to downzone them to B Three. So, I think the answer is with more careful consideration of what properties are exactly affected in those districts, uh, there's several in there that would qualify under that intent, and it's, but only one has come forward to ask for that rezoning, but there are others in that area that I would support a rezoning to M One as well.
Okay. Is that pretty normal, I mean, your experience for these type of actual companies in the B Business District? Like, kind of power transmission line, maintenance facility, like salvage yards?
Yeah, that would typically not be located in a B Three District.
Okay, that's, okay, thank you. Appreciate you.
All right, let's do Councilwoman Williams.
I'd just like to add to that because, okay, what they're talking about, if you've been over there, it's the old tank, it's the old tank manufacturer, and then next to it, it was a rubber, it was a rubber manufacturer that they used to make rubbers and things for Ford Motor Company and Chrysler over in that thing. That always have been M One. Now, what they changed it for, maybe, I don't know, because I've been trying to figure out, why was it changed? As a matter of fact, I don't think nobody in the city ever knew it was changed to B Three. But I, it might have been, because, you know, down Harrison, all down Harrison used to be, it used to be a, a business so far, okay? And then I think one of the mayors changed it to residential, okay? There was a big fight about that, and a lot of the businesses, builders was down, it was towed down. And then this city inherited a lawsuit up into millions that they had to pay out for that. So, I just want to add that to that. So, otherwise, that, them buildings that were operating under B Three, and actually, they should have been M One all the time.
Councilwoman Wiley?
Um, no.
Okay.
No, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
You may mention that this is not going to come off of, I seen Reynolds Road, but it's not going to come off of Michigan Avenue. It's not.
Correct. Yeah, it has no access to Michigan Avenue. The only access to this property is down Harrison and off of Reynolds Road.
Okay, so the face of our Michigan Avenue?
Will remain consistent.
That's all, Mr. Chair. And then also, Mr. Chair, you talked about the manufacturing and outfitting of the armored vehicles. Now, I know this applicant wanted to do some things far as with the rezoning. How can we be certain? Can we do something to make certain that the manufacturing part of the outfitting of these armored vehicles, making sure that that comes to the city of Incester, not just on paper, that we talking about? And then they want something from us to rezone. How can we make sure that we can?
Yeah, so we're, 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 we're far, I wouldn't say we're far from that step because the applicant is here, however, it's still a few more steps that they would have to take in order to even get to a fully operating business there that would fit what they're trying to do. So, they would have to come back before the planning, well, first of all, they would have to start with the planning department with Jamie and go through the checks of whatever it is that they need to do, and then submit that as it relates to whatever they say, okay, it's zoned properly for, then it would have to come to the planning commission. And the planning commission, of course, will go through whatever it needs to go through, recommend up or down. So, that's the first step, because this, this would be a special land use, special regulated land use. So, during that process, that's when we can say to, you know, the applicant, hey, listen, we would like to see this, are you willing to do this, and so on. Now, I can't say that the applicants are already doing business within our community. They own the tire shop right across the street from the police station, anytime that we actually do anything, and working with us as it relates to this administration, and I know others in the community, they've been willing to do that, and I know they want to see and help the community grow. So, I think that those conversations will be easy to be had. So, other, other than that, you know, this is America, and people have to understand that, that we're the government, and when you talk about private entities doing business, they're gonna do business under confines of what the rules and regulations that set forth, what our ordinances are. But at the same time, we can, you know, in good faith, because I'm pretty sure they want to be good business corporate partners in our community and provide good business to our community as well, that they have been willing to negotiate with.
And I'm definitely looking forward to that, because we want to, we want to make sure.
We'll have you part in all discussions.
And just to provide some additional clarification, my understanding, and the applicant can speak to this if I happen to botch this, but I don't think I am. My understanding is that they already have an agreement with the armored group to occupy that space. So, they're taking the necessary steps at this point to find the facility, get it properly rezoned. The facility is there, the facility will very nicely meet their needs for their expansion of what the armored group wants to do. But as the mayor pointed out, they still have to go through the usual planning process to get site plans and things like that taken care of. But I, I know that they have the armored group in an arrangement to secure that facility.
That will bring some jobs to the city of Incester.
Absolutely.
At all, and it'll bring, let's say this, it'll bring industry, international industry. The armored group does pretty much all the vehicles for the military and the presidency. So, as we're talking about a corporation, talking about a billion, billion dollar corporation coming to the city of Incester to do business. So, you know, for me, that's, that's what we have to do. And anytime that we're looking at stuff like this, we have to look at, you know, what's the benefit for the community overall, not just once, say.
Oh, yeah, for the longevity, and, and I understand the spinoffs of these, you know?
For sure. The halo effect, for sure, that it'll create.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Please, Mayor, please.
Okay, would this be two separate buildings?
Oh, well, it's already two separate buildings already in the M One. I think it was two separate businesses that were there.
Two separate buildings, so that the marijuana grow would be in a separate building from this one?
If, yeah, if allowed to be, it would have to be, for sure. Yes, ma'am.
Allowed, so we don't know if it's allowed?
Well, you would have to, again, we, we're the body, this is not doing business on that tonight. So, they, they're gonna have to come back and petition this body at a public hearing and all of that, but they had to go through the planning commission first.
Okay, so I understand that, so why are we rezoning it now?
Well, because, and I understand this, that I know for certain, and actually talking directly to the regional president of the armored group with this body, I mean, with, with these gentlemen, that if they don't find a location in this area, that they're gonna move out of this area. And because it's not zoned properly, they won't even.
Okay, so is it, is it zoned properly for the armored portion?
No.
It's not?
No.
Okay, so how do we know if they can have both of those facilities right next door to each other? Do we know that?
Well, they can. I mean, if it's zoned, because it's an industrial use.
To, to answer your question, yes, both of those, both of those uses would be allowed within the M One District. The fact that they happen to be next door to each other is purely coincidental. The reason that we're asking for the rezoning portion just by itself now is so that we, the applicant can provide the reassurance and proper zoning for the one building for the armored group to move into. Anything else that happens beyond that, whether it's a marijuana facility or something else, as long as it's allowed within the M One District, we'll still go through the whole planning process. And if it's, obviously, if it's a marijuana related industry, it's gonna have to go through planning, planning commission, and city council for a special land use permit.
I mean, I'm just curious, you know, rezoning that we are doing within our city. I mean, a lot of people, I mean, the industry for the armor, that's fine. But a lot of our residents are sick of this marijuana. So, I'm not sure, so every corner, we gonna have one, long as it's within the distance, distance from one and two. I mean, vacant land, we do have a lot of vacant land, but we have nothing. But, okay.
Yeah, that's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to do, Mayor, personally, I think, I get your point, no doubt.
We trying, we not doing it. I mean, the armor thing, we're fine. But, you know, people are just, people are just tired of it. Okay, I'm done.
International business, I mean, we're talking about changing people's lives.
I didn't say anything about the, the other one, I'm telling you, I'm talking about the one that I'm done.
That's a good point, that's a good.
Okay, I'm done, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay, nay.
Nay, nay. Roll call, please.
Roll call, please, City Clerk. Mayor Proctor, I do have a gavel. So I got you.
I mean, I have, I have the right to say roll call.
I hear you.
All right.
I got you. Go ahead, City Clerk.
Mayor Proctor Howard?
Nay.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Lively? Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw? Two nays, four yays.
All right, motion carries. Getting off into public comment, and we would ask that, of course, you address this body when you come up and address it. Roll call, please, state your name for the record. Also, too, you do have a minute to speak. We haven't, this council body hasn't lifted that as of yet. You guys want to go for three minutes? We do need to talk about that and make that into some type of motion. However, we're still at a minute, minute based off of the council rules. And we need to, because of the sake of time, people have been only about adhering to that. So we're going to put the clock on, unless I'm hearing something from the council body.
All right, we can restap, I mean, we should establish it. I don't want to do it just arbitrarily.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We would have to, we can do it. If you guys want to move from one minute to three minutes, we can do it right now.
Yeah.
Moving from one minute to three minutes, relates to public comment.
I make a motion that we move it from one minute to three minutes.
Support.
You moved and supported? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, let's move forward. Commissioner, Connie Mitchell?
Yes?
You're up, ma'am. I do have a-
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm coming as a resident, and I have a concern about some work that was done to a burned-out house two doors from me. I've already asked Mr. Vivens to whom I should address this. He said it's not public services. If I can present this, a couple of these to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I want you to see the condition that whoever the contractor was left the property in. It is absolutely ridiculous.
And Mr. Vivens, you said Mr. Vivens didn't know who the director-
Well, he said it's not, it's not his department that is responsible for monitoring whoever did the work.
Okay, but it is the building department.
Well, they need to come and look at what has happened here. You can see the sidewalk was broken up, hasn't been replaced, the lot has not been leveled, it's full of mud, the mud is on the sidewalk. A gentleman three weeks ago, who I believe was handicapped, fell trying to navigate that area and spent the night on the ground. He was not found until the next morning, when my neighbors went out. So this needs to be taken care of.
So the property was demoed?
The property was demoed, the house burned.
Okay.
And that's where we've been left since the fall of last year.
Okay.
So I would like for someone to really come and get this straightened out.
Yes, ma'am. You can consider that done. We'll definitely get on top of that.
Thank you very much.
I know that they would have had to pull the permit.
The building here or planning, who, who's the-
The building department is not here, it's Mr. Don Jones. But I'll follow with, I'll follow with him and make sure we get on top of that.
Yeah, I'll make sure I get it fixed.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Yvonne Moore?
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
And citizens of Inxter. I just have a few quick announcements that I would like to make to you. So first of all, I would like to let you know about the unity in the community, our Easter egg hunt, that we will be having on Saturday, April 16th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Booker T. Dozier Recreation Center. We are still in need of donations. We do have a fire out, a brochure out that tells everything. If you don't mind, if I can walk up and hand it to you, you can pass them.
Just give it to us, City Clerk, please, she can give it to us. Thank you.
The brochure just tells you a little bit about unity in the community and what we're all trying to do, to bring all the organizations together, so that way, you know, we don't have to worry about this organization giving something, this organization giving something throughout our city, and that we can all collaborate as one. So that's what the brochure is telling you. We do do different activities, but right now, we're just really concentrating on the Easter egg hunt. We are in need of volunteers. We do have, the task force is taking calls through Ms. Mabel Strowman, and we appreciate anyone who would like to volunteer or donate anything at all. We are basically in need of candy, eggs, food, potato chips, hot dogs, stuff like that, and juice. The other announcement I would like to give you is for this Saturday coming March 26th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., we will be having a women's history celebration brunch and fashion show. That will be at the Floyd B. Simmons Center, located 2915 Carlisle. We're hoping that you can be able to come. We're asking for ladies, if you would like to come, either to be a fashion model, or just to come, because you know, I like to see everyone in their Sunday best when they wear those hats. It's like, you know, you can't stop us. So we are asking for you to come. Colors is yellow and white, but if you don't have any yellow and white, we'd just like for you to come. We will have food, we have a special guest speaker, we will be giving away raffle tickets for you to get something very special. We will be giving all ladies a corsage. We're asking not only for the ladies to come, but also our men. If you do come, we're asking you to be in your Sunday best, if you can have a yellow shirt or the white shirt, because we want to show our ladies that they are appreciated. And that is this Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Floyd B. Simmons Building. Just to touch bases on one other thing, the Wayne Metro, we are giving, they are giving out information, and they, they're having different organizations give out the information in regards to the COVID-19 shot. I know you have heard, there is another variant that is coming. They are trying to tell people that they need to get a fourth booster shot, but that's not what we're doing. We're just trying to get the information out to let them know, to try to be safe. You know, the older you get, and also our younger generation, you know, we don't protect ourselves. So we just want, we're getting the information out, we're doing flyers. We do have two flyers, and I will leave them here on the table. So if anyone wants any information, let you know exactly where you can go, tells you the COVID hotline, and why you should keep up to date with your COVID-19 vaccinations. And that's all I have today.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Angela Meeks Hopkins, Hopkins? I must say that, ma'am, I'm sorry. Hope I didn't botch her last name.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilpersons and fine citizens of Inxter. My name is Angela Meeks Hopkins, and I am a, that's okay. I'm a longtime citizen, resident of Inxter, and I come to you tonight as board trustee for the Westwood Community School District. We would like to inform you of our district will be hosting a Bulldog Back-to-School Block Party and Enrollment Fair on Saturday, August 13th, 2022, from 12:00 noon to 3:00 p.m. The block party will be held on the soccer field at the corner of Beach Daily and Janet Street. The event is free to all families. Free backpacks and school supplies will be given to all students present at the event. There will be free food, music, bounce house, face painting, and a corner truck. The Bushman, a popular radio personality from WJLB 98, will host the event. We are expecting anywhere from 500 to 1,000 people to attend this event, and we would just like to invite you as well. If anyone is interested in setting up a vendor table at the block party to promote your business or organization, please contact our superintendent, Dr. Stiles Simmons, at 313-565-1858. And if I may, I have a, have a few flyers if I can approach and-
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
And that is all, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you so very much. Commissioner Ashana Butts? Ashana, I'm sorry. Oh, Commissioner Butts.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
I am Commissioner Ashana Butts, and I have a couple of concerns that I wanted to bring to the council and mayor's attention. The building safety is a big concern right now. We have one employee, and she's maintaining the entire building, and there's no one to watch the front door. So while she's attending to one thing in another part of the building, anyone can walk in, there's no bell, there's no chime, no camera. She's susceptible to anything, and she's there all day. So that's a concern that we saw, especially hearing that there was an incident with a party, where there was alcohol on the premises, the party was canceled, the person became irate, and the police were called. That is a big concern, and that leaves us with a huge liability with just one person maintaining all of that by themselves. Not just that, but the cleaning staff has quit, so we don't have a cleaning company at the rec center, so the bathrooms are not maintained. We also have issues with the fact that in the mornings, there's no one that's there. She comes in around 11:00 or 12:00 to stay into the evenings. There's no one manning anything in the rec center in the mornings. So there's a big concern with the building being open and us being liable, especially with our renovations going. Someone can steal our supplies, our new renovations, anything. We're just wide open, and there's no security, there's just one person. I don't see how we're able to run the rec center that way right now. So I wanted to bring that, that's a big concern to the mayor and the council.
Okay. Have you talked with Mr. Green?
Yes, and-
He brought these, these concerns to his attention?
A lot of this just came to my attention in our most recent meeting, but you don't attend our meetings. So I have one conversation with you per month. You sent me a-
Hold on one second, I'm sorry. You said that he doesn't attend-
He does not attend my meetings. He doesn't, he's not been, he's been to one when he first was hired in, and from my understanding, it is the director's responsibility to meet with us so that we are all on the same accord of what's going on in the building. We don't have an up-to-date budget. We do ask, I have asked, but I'm not getting an up-to-date budget for the rec center. We don't know what's going on.
We don't have a program.
Okay. So that's why you felt that you needed to come here, because you talked to him, and you figured he's my man, so-
No, not at all.
Not just coming to me and talking to me, so I wouldn't know what's going on, because I, this is my first time hearing about it. And as the mayor, I take it as my responsibility to, that the buck stops with me. And you're the president, as I appointed you, as the president of the Parks and Rec Commission, to let me know what's going on as it relates to stuff like that. And I totally get it. And I know that we were supposed to have some meeting and-
You passed me off to him. You passed me off to Director Green last year.
Right.
And you told me that all of my concerns we met with the director, well, they're not being met.
Correct, but if that didn't happen, then that should come to me. And I, and let me just say that since you, you brought it to this body and the attention of this body, I want to make sure that you and I, we have a conversation tomorrow, so we can start and work towards getting some resolution on those issues, because that's a major concern
Yes.
On those things. Now, I want to point a clarity, the, the, the folks didn't quit as it relates to the, the cleaning company. They didn't quit. They, they actually, they just weren't doing the job at all, period. So we, we, we were looking to save that money, and Mr. Green had basically told me that we were working to make that happen. So it sounds like we have some issues that we need to address.
Definitely, and-
And I appreciate that we talk, and then we figure it out from there. And if you don't get any resolution, then of course, this is, this is the, the space you need to come to. And I'll make sure that I start coming back to those meetings then, because that's why I wasn't coming to those meetings, because it's, the director is my designated to make sure that that is done.
I look forward to having a conversation with you to get this resolved. I just thought that we all should be on the same accord, because it's not my first time having an issue with communication.
Okay.
So I wanted everyone, this is Commissioner, I mean, sorry, Councilwoman Washington's district, and if there's a security issue, we are at a huge liability.
Yeah, I totally understand that. But as the administrator, giving me the opportunity to understand what's going on, so I can get to it. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
So I'll make sure that that happens. Yeah, please, go ahead.
Well, I'm the director. There's not just one person work there. I work there as well, so we have other employees. We don't open until 12:00 right now, because we're under construction. So we're not open until 12:00. That's the second thing. You know, we don't just have one person working at the party. So you may have just seen her only, but we have other people working there. And in terms of the cleaning company, that was a $40,000 cost that we didn't need, that we got off of our books. So, and the bathrooms are clean. I clean them myself sometimes, so we don't have that issue. And if you have any pictures of anything, not me and clean, let us know.
Yeah, but Mr. Green, let me just say this, and I appreciate you saying that. The biggest thing, though, is you're not meeting with the Parks and Rec Commission.
I've been meeting with her. I meet with her, and I just sent you the update report, monthly report, the other day.
The monthly report is extremely vague, and everything that we just went over was not brought to my attention. So it was not in the monthly report, nor was I informed of it.
So what we're not going to do, we're, we're not going to do this here, but I just want to make sure that it's on the record that that's not acceptable.
Yeah.
Period. And I will definitely make sure we follow up tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move right along. Let me see, I do not want to botch your name. Last name Smith.
DeAndre.
Okay, please, step forward, because I would, I would have botched that one. All right, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and residents. I am with AmeriCorps. My name is DeAndre Smith, and AmeriCorps Urban Safety Program, we are working with Detroit and surrounding areas. We have been for over 12 years, and we are here to increase community safety and health through community engagement. So we are partnered with Wayne State University, and we are committed to serving Detroit, and we are contracted with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to provide education and resources to residents and communities in need. So basically, our project is serving the communities where there are known water service lines made from lead. So MDHHS and the city of Inxter started distributing lead-reducing water filters a few years ago. So basically, we are joining forces with that project that's already taken off, and we are supplying water filters and refills directly to residents. So our project, basically, you can even request to have the water filters installed into the homes, per the residents' request. And we are also surveying the residents to get an idea on how their water filters, if they already have them, are being used in their homes. And if they don't have them, what kind of water filters they need to be provided with. So basically, you will see us surveying in the community, and we will also possibly be reaching out to the residents via phone as well, to get them to complete a survey. And from then, we will be able to provide them with whatever type of water filter they need, based on their survey responses. And we are, oh, we have been serving in Inxter since last autumn, and so far, just want to note that we have distributed over 1,100 filters from, filters items in Inxter and about 1,000 in other communities. So we are definitely moving along and helping the process. We are able to be reached, if you wanted to contact us, to complete the survey and get a water filter, at 313-444-9808. I mean, 9508. And that is amus, A-M-U-S, program@gmail.com to request a survey or delivery to your home. Cool.
Thank you so very much. Do you have a flyer or some information for us? Okay, what about a website?
Yeah, so the, what is the website?
Website?
So our number is 313- So, our number is three one three four 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 nine five oh eight, and the email address is amus, A-M-U-S, program at gmail dot com. No problem, any other?
Thank you very much.
What was her name? Who are you?
My, my name is Deandre Smith.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. President Miller?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, family behind me. Uh, my name is Will Miller. Um, um, actually, I'm, I'm up here not for me at all. Um, Pastor Overman called me while I was out and about today, and said she can't get to the meeting, but I need you to go, and tell everybody that, um, over at the pantry, she has a fresh grant. She has quite a bit of surplus food that she wants to get out. So she asking everybody to come by is more so than normal. So two seven seven one seven, Carlisle, Mother's Pantry. She's asking folks to come out if you need food, if folks need food, if you know folks who need food, come through. She's got a, a fresh large surplus that's gonna be there until about April. They're gonna be supplying her, so she's looking for some help.
Do you have a day of time?
Um, she's like, no, come get it.
Okay.
While I'm up here, um, I also, um, seasonally chair the city's border review. Uh, we just wrapped up the border review for the March session. Um, wanted to, uh, for those who don't know, the border review is where people come to, um, come and contest their property assessment, uh, for their property taxes, um, also to do their, uh, veteran exemptions and poverty exemptions if you fall under the poverty standard. So, it was, we just wrapped that up for March. Um, and also, as far as, um, housing, I sit currently as, um, board chair for the Inkster Housing Commission. Um, things are going well. Um, we plan on doing some outreach pretty soon, probably within the next couple of months, for, um, some of the developments that we're gonna be having to do. We have to do, um, community outreach, um, by mandate. So we're gonna be doing the mandated amount plus the extra board mandated amounts, try and make sure that this gets out, so look out for that. Other than that, thank you every, so much. You guys have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Commissioner Henderson?
I ain't figured, man, that makes it pay. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and my beautiful family in the audience. Uh, know, what great Lou Rawls says, song for everything, you know, song for everything. Uh, this song, say, I'm searching, I'm still searching for that, uh, letter from the city, so we can get donations, okay, for, from, you know, our beautification. I've been trying, I think Tony's tried to get it for the last year and a half. And I, I was, I promised that I would have that soon. I've been up here a few times, uh, about that letter. And all it is, a letter stating said that officially, you know, beautification-
Yeah, I know you said Home Depot, and I thought Safeway followed up with you on that.
Well, you know, say, you know, I talked with him, you know, and, you know, but then, you know, say, open sesame, you say, 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 okay, well, anyway, yeah, that, that's what I want, I, I would like to get it, you know, because pretty soon, they're gonna be clearing out a lot of stuff. Flowers gonna be coming in, and stuff that might be available might not be there for Inkster, okay?
Come by tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
What time can you come by tomorrow?
I can come down, what, what time you open? No, I'm just saying, no, I know I talked, I talked with her a while back, yeah, but I'm saying, what time you want me to come, and I come.
What time you can have?
After eleven.
After, okay, okay, all right. Okay, and, uh, okay, thank you for that. And you know, uh, you know, it's a flower bed, uh, one of the last projects, you know, Toni Bailey and a few of the, you know, beautification people, we worked out there, right, they got it fixed up real nice and all the flowers and all that. We bought, we, we, we paid for those flowers and all that. I would like to get some kind of plaque, okay? For Toni Bailey, Toni Bailey, she worked out and all that. And, uh, you know, a, a, a nice durable plaque, you know, and that we can put out there, and put it right there in the flower bed, okay? Okay, beautification, our beautification kickoff normally would start in April last, you know, we would run from April to September. Thinking about doing it from May to October this time, okay? Because the last time, you know, a few times, you know, uh, April was a little raining cool and all that, we figured, and then we extended it to October. And, okay, May, if we start in May, we can do a big serious cleanup before the Memorial Day parade, and I think it'll work out fine.
Sounds great.
Uh, yeah, man, letter, okay, may kickoff, okay, Blackford, yeah. That's about all, that's all I have to say, I just, you know, I really want to get a hold of that, and, uh, and, uh, oh, yeah, this, he a hard-working man, but beautification, he got that trailer, he all night got much, he clean up, he, he cleaned up that whole ha- half on the south side.
City having a competition this year to see who can outclean them.
Well, yeah, he, hot, hot, talking about James Brown, hardest working man in show business, he's the hardest making working man in the city of Inkster. Right, right, he ain't saying nothing. But anyway, I love you, I love my, I love my family, and I'm all, you know, trying to keep this beautification, you know, especially-
You don't keep it going.
Well, because she in heaven, looking at us, you know, you know?
Having no other way.
Always be, you know, she, she, she was going on, I believe in that spirit of, you know, God allow, you know, those great people to come and watch over us, you know, and try to influence, sometimes you might feel a little kick here, a little nudge there. That's sometimes as an angel, they say, hey, we're trying to get you doing, do what you're supposed to do, I love you. That's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, sir, moving right into it. Thank you, sir. City Clerk?
I just wanted to remind everyone that we are going into an election cycle, and as a result of the redistricting that took place, I, there's some changes in your congressional district. So, because of that, everyone is gonna get new, um, voter registration cards, voter ID cards, and also, there are many, many special interest groups that want to be sure that you're registered to vote. So your mailbox is probably already getting flooded with applications. So, if you have any question about your status, just give the clerk's office a call. If you know you are a registered voter, but because you get that piece of mail, you may, you know, have some questions about it, just give us a call in the clerk's office, and we'll let you know what your status is.
And I understand the importance of that, and also to redistricting. You think we could possibly do, um, town hall? Just with the map and the redistricting and all that stuff, and talk about that stuff, and then have some of our other folks come out?
We can do that.
In relation to professionals, be able to support that?
I would.
Okay, let's see, how, how quickly you think we can-
I don't want to do it very quickly, because-
Okay, okay, just let, 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 let me know. Okay, but just putting it out there, though, for sure, we definitely want to do that. I know that, um, as it relates to, um, us changing and being a part of the twelfth congressional district now, you know? And then, of course, with, with this representative seat and the senate seat, we want to make sure that people are aware of what's going on and not just hearing it, but they're hearing it from us.
We can definitely do that, I think it'd be important.
Yes, ma'am. Soon, okay, rather than later. All right, Trezor?
No.
All right, Mayor and Council, going around, Councilman Chisholm?
I'm having a technical difficulty. I'm just gonna project my voice, because, uh, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, a couple of things. Actually, when Mr. Miller was standing up here, I realized I owed Mr. Bibas an email to just inquire about some potholes, um, on Avondale between Blackstone and Beach Daily. Um, the crews were out, but it looked like they might have got called to do something else. You know, because we got a ton going on in the city, and they just didn't get a chance to finish up on those. And then on Monticello, um, that's where Mr. Miller stays, it's two right there at the end of some driveways, and they actually come back, you know, every year, so I'll shoot it to Mr. Bibas, and the email just came to me when I saw him standing up, I thought about it.
Okay.
I'm glad to see that the young lady from AmeriCorps came out, because I did speak to Rep. Tyrone Carter the other day, and he had asked me to text him the information, so I'm glad you came out and brought that to us, because I actually had two residents just asked just today about water filters and things of that nature. And I know after we were done, it shifted over to Wayne County, but then the number I have for Wayne County that I was giving out, it just rang. So, I didn't know which way to direct people, so I'm glad that information was brought forward. Uh, my last thing is, I had attended the school board meeting for Summit Academy Middle School. That's one of the school districts that services Inkster, um, and I guess I showed a little bit of favor, because I work there right now. And the reason I went is because our students in the city are serviced by multiple schools around us, and we don't have any input on the curriculum or really what's going on. The decisions get made, just like here at council meeting. The people that are here in the audience know what's going on, but the rest of the community don't watch, or don't come, don't show up. And, well, I'm saying the ones that don't, but then they're upset by the decisions that are made, and don't come and voice their opinions, get any input or take back. So, I challenged myself, let me go to this one and see what's going on. They actually had an appeal hearing for an expulsion that night. Um, and because of COVID, now when you get expelled, you're not just kicked out of school, you have the option to go to online only. Now, it doesn't work for everybody, but you are given that option to still continue school, you just can't be in the building. So, that was eye-opening. I saw two different attorneys engaging, one was an advocate for the student, and one was an attorney for the school board. And it was, again, eye-opening. Um, I introduced myself, and I let them know that I was there, because I see the school buses out here, of course, I worked there too, but I was, had my political hat on at that time. And I said, if I didn't start going to school board meetings, um, just like this mix out here in the, in the, um, audience over in Westwood. If we're not engaging with these different school boards around our community, and I'm not just charging you all with it, but I'm charging the rest of our community with it as well, providing this service to our students, because when we're saying, well, why aren't you passing, or how come so-and-so is going to this school, and they know so much more than you do, you're getting a higher grade than they are. It's, you know, on us to look into that at those meetings, and maybe just voice those concerns, maybe inquire, and find out different things. For instance, I had a constituent yelling at me one day about a Westland Public School bus over in our district. I said, I don't control that. I said, but I could call the school board member, request it, and talk to the transportation, but we don't have any control over where they put their bus stops in our community. And she isn't one in front of her house anymore. And I think they did move it, but it's still an issue. But, I just wanted to let you know, I know that I did go, and I'm gonna try to be engaged with school boards, so if there's ever any concern like that going on, that's gonna impact our students severely, I can bring it back to this body, and we can figure out if you need to pick up the phone, if we all need to pick up the phone, and do something to make sure our kids are getting the best education or the best resources, and not being treated like transplants or outsiders, because you're going into the other school systems. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman Chisholm. Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would just like to, um, speak about, you know, people have been asking me about the skating rink, and I wanted to speak on that. Um, I met with the owners, and, and lightly I went in, and they had their grand opening and various things like that. Um, they have decided it's a, it's a family skating rink. They, what they want you to do is, um, take your groups, and, and, and rent the whole building for so many hours and various things like that. They didn't want to really open it to the public, okay? And I, I, some parts I can understand that, okay? So, what we've been trying to do now, we, we got family people, just, just, just renting the skating rink and going in with their whole entire family. We got different organizations that are using it, and that's the way to do that. And I think it's, if I'm not mistaken, I don't want to get a whole lot of folks in there for what they charge you to go in there for so many hours to skate. So I just want to bring that out in our area. Skating rink is, is officially open, they got their papers and everything, it's doing great. Another thing I wanted to talk about was, um, I, I, I'd love to see Gabe take over the, uh, beautification, because the simple fact is, you know, one of the things about it, we might not have a lot in, in, in the district where I'm at, but we're growing. And one thing we do do, we clean up, we clean up everything around there. You know, we got some, some issues now that we, we call people out, you know, about stuff need to be picked up in the areas and stuff like that, you know? Um, I don't know why, all of a sudden, I've been in Inkster all my life, you know, I was born here in nineteen fifty, and I, and I just wondered now, why so, so many people getting so hungry now that they can just dump paper all out on the street? I see cars riding down the street, throwing their McDonald's and Burger King bags out on, and, and they get to Inkster. But they don't throw them out when they get to Westland and got another different, in, in, in places like that. And the only reason why they do that is because we gotta open our eyes up and become righteous people to, to be able to turn, to get them license plates and give them to our new, our new chief over there. Exactly, because I, one thing I do give him credit for, I can say it publicly, because the simple fact is, you give him a license plate, then he gonna run them down, okay? And we need to start looking in our areas and stuff like that, and we got a lot of cleanup, we've been doing a lot of cleanup, you know? I, I, I used to love Toni when she get the cleanup committee together. The mayor been challenging me for, I don't know how many, since he been in there, that he gonna out, out, out clean me, he ain't done it yet. So, I just, I just want to bring that out, okay? I, I'm planning on with my organization, everybody know I'm the president and CEO of the National Christian Action, which is a, which is a, which is an organization for disadvantaged youth, and I have been, uh, running that organization since nineteen eighty-seven. And we still alive. What I want to do this year, and I want to bring it out, and I need everybody that's not, uh, to join in with me and this whole, whole community. I, I, I'm gonna have a bike-a-thon here in the community, I think it's about June or July, whatever date we, we pick. And I'm asking everybody to bring out their two wheels and get involved, you know? I might even call this, I might even call this Love Bike-A-Thon, come out, show your love with the mayor. I put him in the front, now if he fall off the bike, somebody gotta pick him up, okay?
There's Rummy Ho.
I, I used to, I used to see that all over everywhere you go. You go in the, you go in big communities, rich communities, even some poor communities, you see people have bike-a-thons all through there, and this bike-a-thon is gonna be called the Unity of Love, okay? And we're gonna, we're gonna get that, and I, yeah, I got that from, uh, Babel Stroman, the unity of love, that we gonna come, bring our bicycles out, shine them up, we gonna give pride, the mayor gonna give pride as well, whoever got the best-looking bike. You understand? And we just gonna have a good time. So let's just, we're gonna mark that date and get back with you, and, and, uh, another thing I wanted to talk about, Mr. Mayor, uh, in my community, I, I am excited, you know, and I, you know, and I hope that, uh, when the mayor get ready to do a state of the district, that, you know, one of the things that we have so much, so much vacant property in my district, okay? That was sitting there, the city had to cut it, city had to clean it up and everything. Well, I'm happy to say about eighty percent of that property is sold. And the, and the people in the, in the community that we've been talking to bought the property, fixed it up, and it keeps it cut. They didn't, they didn't have to do that. You know, because a lot of people say, well, I'm gonna buy that land for, because, ah, I gotta cut it and do this and do that. But I like the attitude of a lot of the people saying, hey, we gonna buy this lot next to my house, I'm gonna keep it like that, and you don't know, you, you, you don't know when we gonna start moving forward. So I'd just like to say to everybody in the audience, and to the mayor and the council, okay? And, and it calls a new attitude. A new attitude is called, you know, for we to have peace and love among one another, you know? I don't care if you don't like me, you ain't gotta never like me, and I'm a hard person to like, but I love you, that's the key. And I know somebody that loves all of us, okay? So I just want to say that it's time that we start moving this city forward. We doing a great job, I mean, I say, I always said this, and then I'm through. I always said, when we had a city manager former government, we would never build Inkster. We'll never build Inkster, because the city manager is gonna come here, run the day operation, and go home. But ever since, we've been trying to put a full-time mayor in here and move, and for we are making movement, okay? I mean, and, and now, now go back, go back when the city manager here, and tell me how many buildings went up, how many buildings we had that went up when he was in here? And how many we got going on now? So, I just want to leave that with you, you know, and then a lot of you just sitting here, uh, join in. As we come together, we gonna disagree. God knows, God knows, there's a whole lot of us gonna disagree in here, but it doesn't mean we gotta be disagreeable. God bless you, congratulations, I wanted to send my, well, I should say condolences, but I'll send my, my love to the new chief that's in there.
Councilwoman Wiley, you wanna jump in?
Yeah, I have a question for Councilwoman.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wiley.
I have one more request. I don't, I don't want you to forget about the Ink Town pedal pushers when you start this bike-a-thon. Because you know, I had started that a couple of years back, and then COVID hit.
Started riding bikes over the hills. I'm talking about going through the whole city with love. You drag your love signs out.
I'm riding through the whole city.
Y'all can unify that, y'all can unify that, unify that. That's opportunity.
No, because I said I'm gonna name it after the mayor, he said, I, well, we're not, I'm gonna put your name.
No, 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 he wasn't saying it like that.
I'm taking it like that, no.
I put Stevie's name on there.
There you go, we gonna do it together.
Hey, when it become state rap, he be in there too, okay, come on.
There you go, I like that. Sorry, Councilwoman Wiley, you at the floor?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Each week I ask for the building department versus outsourced, in-sourced, and I was sent something again, which is what I was sent before, and I still can't make heads or tails of it. It's an Excel spreadsheet, and then there's something else. So maybe you could explain it to me when you get the opportunity, because I'm not sure that I'm getting the information I requested. Okay? Uh, the second thing is I'd like a GFL contract update.
What you thinking over there, Mr. Bivens? Ready to speak on that?
Did he, did he go to sleep?
I, I can speak to it.
Well, he, he, the, the attorney probably told him not to speak.
Oh, okay.
We, it actually has been escalated between Michael Fish, who's the general counsel for GFL, and myself. We communicated additional demands based on the administration and the council. They got back to us, um, they've increased their offer, but we haven't reached a resolution yet. Hoping to flush it out this week.
Okay, so we should have some information shortly in our favor, you said they increased their.
They have increased their offer.
Okay.
They, they've offered more.
Okay, that's, that's always good. Um, the, uh, next thing is I believe there was a misunderstanding last week in reference to the, um, camera policy that I was referring to. I wasn't referring to the ordinance. Uh, that is in place, and we did vote on that. But what I was talking to was a, was information that was put in our packet on February the seventh. And it had to do with the RCTV camera situation, in which, um, they were, uh, asking Inkster business owners will supply the Inkster Police Department with login codes, passwords, security prompted information. Then there's a fee, an initial installation fee for a hundred dollars per business, and then after that, the fee is six hundred dollars annually to each business. Now, this, you took this out, you said, we're not gonna discuss this, we took it out.
Yes, ma'am.
But my concern is how it got here in the first place, and it, and I called a few of the business owners, like I said, and they're unaware of it.
Yeah.
So you would think that they would be involved in this before it became a, a packet situation.
Well, I, I'm, I'm, that's why I asked it to be taken out, because I wasn't involved in it either, as it relates to that particular item itself. That was done by a former chief, um, as it relates to, you know, the cameras and trying to match it up, mask it with the ordinance that we already have to put in what, what they, the new camera system that we're working on, that we were granted from the federal government as it relates to CBT cameras around the city.
But like I said, this seems to be a total, um, expense to the owners. And if our goal is to bring more businesses into the city of Inkster, this does not seem attractive.
Correct.
To, uh, to them, to come in here and, and get the cameras, because, believe me, everybody I talked to was in favor of cameras. They just had suggestions about how this should be implemented.
Yes, ma'am.
They were saying that, uh, the cameras should be uniform, there should be some continuity between them, because some people had this type of camera, some people had that type of camera. Even one resident or business said that the, the camera he bought freezes in the winter and breaks, so it's no good. But if we had some sort of standard for that type of thing, but not in this expense. And like I said, I'm just trying to make sure, like I do with the residents, if they're involved in this, or if they're gonna be asked to participate to this, they have something to do with the input. Because like I said, most of them are, are on board with cameras, but this is a bit much, especially when they're asked to give their codes to the police department. I know they're trustworthy as heck, but you know?
I totally agree, that's why I asked.
This is not something.
Yes, ma'am.
That, that I would do if I was a business owner.
I agree, me either.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure, because last week it seemed like we were only talking about the ordinance that's on the books now. And I wanted to make sure that the rest of the council understood that this is an entirely different thing. And if you go back to your packet from February seventh, you'll find it in there. But the mayor did take it out, we didn't discuss anything of it, so I'm concerned about what's happening with it.
Yes, ma'am, I totally agree one hundred percent. However, we haven't got to that point yet, that's why it was so premature, because we needed to bring in the chamber and, and talk with the chamber, it relates to the businesses, how we would necessarily roll that out, because, you know, some, some folks want to do like the green light system as it relates to city trades or something similar to that, as it relates to monitoring their businesses. However, we know there would be a cost that would be in that. So, uh, that came again from, it shouldn't have never been there, so.
Okay, that's fine, I just don't wanna look up one day and find it law, you know?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, not at all.
That's it.
Okay. All right, then, let's go ahead, Council.
Point of clarification, please. It's not law.
No, no, sir. Okay, all right, Councilman Shaw?
Listen, I just have a, a few, a few things, uh, some cleanup, uh, items. Now, on, on the agenda, we had some grants that was talked about that came through. If we could, be my suggestion, that we can put them on or inside the monthly reports when we get those monthly reports, so we'll know exactly what grants have come. Some, some said it was in November, you received letters or what have you, you know? It would be good if we can get that in the monthly report.
We'll put it actually on one Excel spreadsheet for you, because they're in each department. We'll take them and put them all together, so you can have a cheat sheet, if you will, you know?
Very, that's very good. And also, if you see something, say something. I was really delighted to hear residents coming to the, to the council chambers and talking about what they have saw, and they said something about it. So, always, if you see something, say something. It doesn't necessarily just have to be a crime, whatever you see, let us know, say something about it. And I do want to also thank, uh, the chief, Chief Ratliff, Ms. Joyce, I've been on Ms. Joyce. I know she's tired of hearing me, but I want to thank Jerome and your department. They helped out some of my district members, and I am grateful for the, the job that they done. I know, like I said, Ms. Joyce, she been texting, I mean, she been sending me emails, I know she's tired of me. But I want to thank her for the job well done. Uh, also, on Helen Street, there's an open door there, it's eleven ninety-one Helen Street. Now, we've been dealing with this property several times. Um, I don't know if the homeowner or the owner of that property is really cognizant of his property to maintain his property. But there's an open door. I know we've been talking about the potholes. I did give Ms. Joyce a list of potholes, but I, I didn't add Avondale Street from Harrison to Inkster Road. There's a, a, a array of potholes that's there. Uh, I seen them on Glenwood, they, they been out patching on Glenwood. Also, on Center between Woodland and Northwood, there's an array of potholes there. And I wanted to ask about the street sweeper. Are we gonna, is that on schedule, is that coming?
Oh, yeah, sure.
For April, May?
Yeah, I talked to them, and I agree we're working out the schedule for them to start next month.
Okay, very good, sir, thank you. Uh, also, a police patrol on Helen and Rosewood Street. That's in Helen and Rosewood. And that's, that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Washington?
Um, yes, just have, uh, two things. Um, now that it's getting a little bit warmer, the kids are, they're gonna, you know, come out and start riding their bikes and playing. Um, on Oakwood Street, there's a really bad, um, sidewalk. Um, the kids seem to continue to trip over. Um, and I don't want any of them to get hurt, so that's between, um, that's between Hemmy Rough, um, closer, Oak, Oakwood closer to Hemmy Rough. I can get that information, the actual, um, address and send it over.
Okay.
Um, also, I'm gonna send over another, um, address as well, Wesley Street. There was a fire that happened at a home, and I believe they are doing things inside the home without actually having a building permit to actually do or to be able to make those renovations. So I'll get that information over as well to, um, the building department and yourself as well.
Okay.
And that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Mayor Proton?
Nothing at this time.
All right, ma'am. Very quickly, um, I was asked to say this publicly, Mr. Bivens, um, thank you for Emerson Street as it relates to the gravel being put down at Emerson Street, but we definitely want to look again at pave at Emerson and, and Helen. Also, um, Duran Court and York in that area as it relates to the getting gravel in that area, because the streets are really not existing in that area. So I was asked to say that publicly, and I did. Although I know I told you that already, but I want to make sure that's in front of everybody else. Also, too, as it relates to my state of the city address, I know that we've been going back and forth for a couple of years now talking about the state of the city. It's very important to me that when I talk about anything, that I talk from a point of facts and understanding. The city has a lot of moving components, and it, it's been doing a lot of wonderful things, and I want to be able to capture all those things. We have a project, we actually have two projects that I can't necessarily announce publicly at this point, because I need to bring it before this body. But I think it's very important that we talk about those things as it relates to the downtown development, working with the, the DDA, and I've asked all of you all to look at the actual DDA, um, as it relates to the composition of the DDA, and if you had anybody that wanted to serve on the DDA and making sure that we had the right people serving on the DDA. We, we have a huge opportunity, where we have fifteen million dollars in private money looking at that area where they've already pretty much collected, um, property in between Inkster Road and, what's the street up behind, the, the Civic Arena?
South River, you talking about South River?
Not South River. Hill, Hill Street, so all, all in that area. And then also, too, we know that the, uh, Civic Arena, um, we did an RFP, went out for a request for proposal. We sold the building for two hundred thousand dollars. Um, right now, currently, the owner has put already, uh, roughly about another hundred thousand in. He has to do some roof repairs, it looks like about three hundred fifty thousand that he's doing there. Um, if you ride by there, they're busy all the time. And just with that commitment, he's committed another five million to be able to put into that area, to develop that area. But the council owns, of course, the police and court. So I want to be able to talk about those things, um, to the general public, and it's happening now. But I need to come before this body, the first meeting in April, with the proposal to look at what we're going to do working together. Also, too, Jamie, don't, I, I, don't, don't, don't get me, but I just have to say it, because this is important, because people are thinking that I'm procrastinating on the state of the city, I can do this in my sleep, I, I love this city. The Inkster High School property, now let me say this, we're gonna look at moving the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame to Inkster Road, Michigan Avenue. Most of the property on the frontage of Inkster Road, Michigan Avenue, in between the Cricket Wireless and, um, Cannons is private, so we can do that. So we're working to do that now. So that's gonna happen as we go through the process, and of course, it has to come through this body and then work with the DDA. The Easter High School property, because of consumers' energy and what we did over there, we've been getting a lot of buzz from people that want to do some type of industry in that area. And we have a company on the hook right now that I believe is gonna make sense to where they're looking to, Councilor Mayor Proton Howard, to actually buy the property and then put about twenty-five million dollar development into the property. So, I want to be able to bring that before this body. I think we should be pretty close to getting there, Jamie, you think by the first meeting in April? We can have the second meeting in April? Okay. But at any rate, I'm, I, I know I said I was gonna do the state of the city this Saturday. Unfortunately, I'm not gonna do it this Saturday, but I'm going to commit to doing it April the ninth, no matter what. The councilmatic body, I sent you that information already. I wanted to say this to the general public as it relates to doing it, giving you an update on our finances, giving you an update, of course, you know, the safety of our, all of our city, of course, how we're looking to do business cleanly, safe, and accessible for all of us in, in this, in this community. But I have a major announcement, and I'm really, really excited. Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib has secured two point five million dollars for the senior center for us, and it will be happening. She wants us all to come out on April the fourteenth, where she's gonna bring a big check out. She normally don't do big checks, she says she's never done a big check, but she want to do a big check in the city of Inkster. Giving the city of Inkster, this two point five million dollars that's been secured, roped into the budget for the federal government as an earmark to the city of Inkster to build out our senior center. As the president, the, the rec commissioner said already, we had construction going on. That construction is just one phase, that was the phase of the renovation, um, from, that money was given to us by the Wayne County Commission. Thank you to Glenn Anderson and the commissioners, and of course, Moon Evans, as it relates to, um, that particular money to renovate the inside of the rec complex at no cost to the citizens of Inkster. So it's no reimbursement, we didn't have to pay upfront any monies. They're actually managing the project, and that's what's happening in, in that area right now. And they're really, they're on track, they should be done by June the first. However, I apologize to the rec commissioners. You guys aren't just seated there to just be seated, seated there, you should have the information, we should be sharing and talking with one another. Feelings aside, whatever, I don't care, however, we like each other, we don't like each other, whatever. The ultimate goal is to make Inkster a better place. So if that's your intent, I want to meet with all of you. So I'll call a special meeting, or you call a special meeting, um, let's do it, you know, sooner rather than later. If you could, I'm putting on the record, call a special meeting for all of you, so we can all talk, so we can all be on the same page. And whoever it is, we all have to be accountable. And that's, that's just it, at the end of the day. But that's what has, has happened to our community, because we aren't accountable. We get into our feelings and our emotions and all that other stuff, instead of taking care of the business of the city. And when I lay the state of the city out, all the people that's been saying we ain't been doing nothing. You gonna see all the wonderful work that we've been doing, because we talk about grants that we receiving all the time. We got so much money in grants, it's just outrageous, in two years during COVID. So just imagine what we're gonna do these next two years, I guarantee you that Inkster's on the rise. Call for adjournment?
I want you to adjourn.
All in favor of signature papers, ain't I?
Aye.
Any nays? When you say nay, you can stay. Meeting adjourned, yes, ma'am. About what?
Cannons?
No, what about?